Call the Navy North.
Jenkins.
Here.
Poppy.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McKinley.
Yes.
Testory.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we bring Rick up for a public comment, I have something to read. "In Farmer City, I've enjoyed serving as your mayor. I'd love to continue doing so. However, an opportunity has presented itself at the ministry that I serve that is both exciting and challenging. There's just no way that I can juggle both this opportunity and my mayoral position. At the end of this July 10th, 2017 city council meeting, I will tenure my resignation. Thank you for letting me serve you. God bless Farmer City. There will be no further public comments." Rick, on that, you have the floor.
Okay. I don't have very much to do, just real quickly. I wanted to thank the council for the donation towards the fireworks. We had that, what would be, a week ago, Friday night, and I think it was pretty good. We learned a little stuff from last year. I think last year we ran a little late before we did. I think we did that earlier this year. I think we had a lot of really positive comments. Thanks to the city's donation, plus donations that night and some other businesses in town, that we had, I think, what, slightly over half of the fireworks paid for.
Yep.
I think so. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Good to meet you.
No further public comments. We go to section one.
Make a motion to approve the dissent agenda.
Paul.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Poppy.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
McKinley.
Yes.
Testory.
Yes.
There being no unfinished business, we move to section three, new business.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2017 dash 30 dash three-year, doesn't make sense, three-year commitment to the Farmer City Heritage Days Committee to block off Main Street during Heritage Days Festival.
Second. Discussion.
Why do we need a three-year commitment?
Because we have a three-year commitment from the carnival. Which is a very good thing.
It is a good thing. I'm just wondering if we can't narrow it down to a more specific area. Because it's, in my opinion, this sets up a rift between the Chamber of Commerce and us for blocking off the street in advance, knowing how they feel about it.
Who do you mean by the Chamber of Commerce exactly? What exactly are you talking about? Be specific, please, because we all want to know.
Okay, the furniture store.
Okay.
Pharmacy, the pet store.
They specifically, as I say, they specifically.
No one actually complained to us this year. Not to us.
That's my opinion. This street has been blocked off every year in advance. There's no reason to believe it wouldn't be blocked off in the future as needed.
Everybody suffers from the street being blocked off.
Does it have to be 200 block managers suffer from this? I mean, I suffer from it, too.
All businesses.
All businesses suffer from it. I've learned to accept it.
We all have trusts come in.
The furniture store started, the furniture store is when it started blocking off Main Street, get right down to it.
Right.
So, I've accepted every year it's been blocked off. Didn't like it in the beginning, but I just went on. I didn't come to the city council complaining or crying.
Is there any reason it wouldn't be blocked off in the future as needed?
Well, it's always going to be blocked off to a point and everything.
Well, he just means that, why can't they come back here and here and ask for the street to be blocked off, is what you're saying?
That is exactly what I'm saying, yes.
Okay. I just think that they are looking for a three-year commitment because they've committed to the carnival. So they're looking just to have the commitment of the three years from the city. It's one less thing that they have to do. One less thing they have to worry about. That's why I didn't want it.
You got a time track for the carnival?
Yeah, I have to sign it. I can't sign it until I get the okay from the.
There's why she wants three years.
It's hard to get a carnival. You do not know how hard it is to get a carnival.
Extremely hard.
Extremely hard. This is a good thing.
A good one.
Keep it, it's the biggest.
Yeah.
We need to keep them. And we can't keep them without a contract being signed. And three years is fantastic.
Any further questions or discussion?
Is this something that we can do? Last meeting, I thought there was a thing where we can't commit this council to anything past the earliest term of this council.
Sue's checking her head. No, I mean.
Is that, no, okay. Then we're good.
Any further questions or discussion? Call it.
Poppy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Present.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2017 dash 31, approving $1,500 donation to the Harlan Kimber, Kimmler Memorial Race.
Second. Discussion.
What is the raceway you're voting for? What's the score?
It goes to increase the purse to draw more cars, more drivers, more fans.
What's the purse for the spring?
It's 3,000 yen for the late miles, 1,500 for the modifieds. The actual purse, if I look it up, for that night, just, well, the whole purse that night will probably be about $15,000.
That's the total payout to all the drivers.
Oh, okay. So that's not, it's like one.
When we say so much to win, it's just for the winner, and then we have to pay all the others down, on down through the line, declining sums. But yeah, the total will be, like I said, I think around 15,000. Don't quote them, the exact number, but something like that, yes.
So, I mean, I just, I have nothing against the raceway. I just want to better understand, like, how the operation of the raceway works and, like, the revenue that you guys get on a yearly basis. Because I'm counting 27 races, and I do understand that some of those races are, like, a national thing and not anything that you all have something to do with. But I am questioning, because it's $12 a person for an adult to get into your race and $5 for a veteran. So, I mean, I based it on that many races, and if every single person was a veteran, and I'm basing that on Lance saying numerous times that there's 800 to 1,000 people every Friday night coming in. So, and 800 people every Friday night coming in at $5 a person, that would be roughly about $108,000. Y'all are making just off of admission.
Okay.
And that doesn't include beer sales, food sales?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, yeah. No, I would love to.
What I have here is a combination of, I file a couple different reports during the year, well, several. But the first one is, goes to, two of them go to the state of Illinois, the Department of Agriculture. One of them is what we call rehab, which basically is the maintenance and repair that we spend, that we have to prove to the state that we're upkeep on the property. The other one is, what they call.
Is that to the racetrack or is that just to local property?
I'll get that side. And the other one I file is for the premium fund, which is what we pay out on the, to the fair. So, during the fair, that would be premiums to exhibitors. It does not count any motorsports events except the track. So here's kind of where some of the money goes. And these are audited by the state of Illinois, so that's, I'm not getting out anything here. For the year, fiscal year ended June 23rd, or June 30th, the maintenance and repair on the fairgrounds, we spent about $11,400. And a good portion of that is to local businesses. The insurance, we spend each year, both on the facility, the vehicles, the equipment, and the liability is $28,500 is what we spent in the last fiscal year. Real estate taxes, because the county does believe that we should pay taxes on a portion of the fairgrounds where the track is, we spent $4,435,000 on real estate taxes. That was last year's payment.
How much was it?
4,435. About $2,620 of that goes straight to the schools. In 2016, I went to city hall and asked for them to run a report about what we paid for utilities. In 2016, we paid the city of Farmer City $17,000. And that's not exactly right. I think the actual number is 16,958 or something like that. So I just rounded it to $17,000. In premiums, what we pay out during the fair, this is premiums to exhibitors. It does not include any of the motorsports. We pay out $52,485. That was the 2015, let me explain that. That was the 2015 payout. In 2016, we abbreviated the fair due to budget concerns, so we paid out $52,485. This year, we have gone back to the same format. I didn't bring the Declaration of Enquanto because I didn't know what was going to be quizzed on it. But basically, what that says is we offer in the neighborhood of $80,000 worth of premiums to the exhibitors. Now, we never fill all the classes, so I would expect it to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 50-some thousand again this year that we pay out.
How much are you bringing in off of the people that enter into those if you're paying premiums to?
We don't have an exact number, but hang on a second. I think I can come close if I have the right, the, now, we do get some money back from the state, but it only amounts to, if we pay out over 50,000, we'd get, I think, 12 or 13 back, a little less than a third of it. So, what we brought in on, let's see if I even have that or not. Here again, I wasn't prepared for the full. Entry fees collected, the entry fees for all of that run about $11,000. And the other thing I wanted to point out, it's, you know, when we talk about the regular Friday nights, I think the regular Friday nights are closer to 400 or 500.
Yeah, you got one.
I just wanted to be clear on that. So, basically, if we bring in, this is through the front gate, if we bring in 400 people, just round it to 10 because I can do that in my head, so $4,000. Plus, we also have the entry fees from the back gate. Now, on a regular Friday night, we probably pay out what?
$12,000 on a regular Friday.
On a regular Friday night. So, 4,000 from the front, excuse me, I should have brought some water. Probably another, about that, from the back, plus beer and food. Typically, on, what a racetrack does is, on a regular Friday night, your goal is to break even. If you make the money, it's on the big races. Now, the reason you have the regular Friday nights is that's where the drivers for the big races come from. You have to have a weekly track. You got to have the people, you know, to move up through the ranks. So basically, you hope to break even on a regular Friday night. Now, if the weather's great, we will make some. If the weather's bad, we'll lose some. We understand that going in. But I know a lot of people think there's just a ton of money available being made up there because they add up all the income, but they don't add up the expenses.
Oh, I understand there's expenses, and I'm not just saying that, you know, oh, you guys should, I mean, I've ran an event, so I understand that y'all are probably making hand, you know, money hand over fist. I get that. But I also, I'm just a little confused on why, I mean, I know Lance mentioned at the last meeting that a lot of your guys' money goes for the fair, and you guys support that fair, which I'm a little, it just seems like totally off balance if y'all are paying 52, 4 in premiums, but you're bringing in 11,000. I mean, you're like 40,000. I'm just wondering, like, what the benefit of the fair is? Like, is it still a benefit to you guys, or is it more of like?
It's our reason for existence. It's our charter.
So you have to have it in order to?
Yes.
To stay?
Yeah.
We're not doing it to make money. We're doing it for the kids, so that they have a fair, so they still, there's 4-H fair, and this is still, you know, for the community itself, to have something.
That's in one of the reports.
What are you saying is for the community, the fair?
The fair in general is for the community, for the kids, for the youth. It's not just, it's not for us, it's to have a fair. I mean, if everybody wants to see all the fairs closed, which the state of Illinois has been doing a good job of making that happen, and we're trying to make it supportive. And one of the few fairs still alive is because of the racetrack. And I was wrong on my numbers for the junior killer race. Actually, it's more closer to $20,000 purse. Because like I said, it's a $12,000 on a regular Friday night, and that's the reason we won't get as many followers for this one. That's why we're asking for the extra money. So, and it used to be $3,000 because of your hotel motel. Now it's 1,500. So we're already going to take a big, a big hit, so.
I want to ask something, but I'm not sure I have the phrase to. Okay, the fair has a non-for-profit status.
Correct.
The racing.
501(c).
It's an agricultural, 501(c)(3), you're an agricultural, non-for-profit. The racing association, is that what you call yourself? You're underneath the fair.
There's only one, I use that for clarification, but there is only one organization, the Farmer City Fair Association.
Farmer City Fair Association. The racing is just a business for the fair to raise money versus having a. Please, let me ask my question. You have your chance to talk, okay? It's your way to raise money versus having a pancake and sausage breakfast every month for, every month out of the year. So sweet. Basically, okay.
Our charter, it's, the charter back when this was, the Articles of Incorporation, the reason for the thing to exist is, it literally says, fair and racing. So we are going just exactly with what our charter says.
Okay. Fair and racing. And back when your charter was put together and everything back then, it was probably not car racing, it was probably more horse racing than anything.
No, it was auto racing.
It was auto racing.
We've been racing there since, since the 30s. I mean, starting with.
You've been racing there since the 30s.
Well, not right there.
You've been racing there since the 30s, and it hasn't been, races came back in Farmer City in about 1970, '71. And before that, I'm too young to remember when they had them before that. Maybe a little bit I can remember when they were up there, and I can stir them in the tires on the infield thing, didn't have a bank trap, and it was dead for a long time. Now, I, that much I know. But I'm not against the races either. You know, I'll accept the fact. Is there something wrong?
No.
So, I'm just trying to clear it, too. I want to understand what you've got up there because for a long time, a lot of things were not clear. And it brought some very hard feelings around. I think for a long time, it was that promoter that was trying to make a profit and taking the money out of this community and out of this, even this county. So, that's the reason. We're all volunteers, and I'm not sure how those promoters ever made any money because we're not making the money, and we're volunteers. So.
I will say that in 2000.
And I guess you have to be volunteers to make it all work because everything is that, anything you pull off has to be on a volunteer basis and everything. I'm not saying you're getting paid. I'm not saying trying to, but.
All our income tax returns are filed with the Department of Revenue. You're welcome to look at them.
I'm so big. Your real estate taxes, have you checked on your non-for-profit status with the real estate taxes?
Well, yes, we were exempt on the racetrack back when Rutledge was the president. They, is when they instituted that, and he told us he went down and tried to protest it, and they insisted. Now, I will say that's when we had an outside promoter running it, and I have not been backed down to see. I really don't mind us paying the taxes as much because that returns, like I said, $2,600 to the school. I think the balance goes to the city of Farmer City, the fire protection district. I'm not really out here to take, you know, revenue away from somebody else. So, if we can afford it, I haven't really fought it.
The only other thing I'm going to say about this is, I, you know, I just am not 100% sure I feel comfortable with it, putting out hotel motel because, I mean, per the audit of hotel motel, when we gave the $5,000 to the rowing club, that depleted the hotel motel tax to about $600. When it was on video, that our mayor said that we had $30,000 in hotel motel tax, and you guys approved that, but after the audit was done, it showed that we had about $631 in hotel motel tax after you gave that $5,000 out. So, we are just now trying to dig ourselves out of this hole. So, I personally don't feel comfortable giving money out right at this moment because I just don't know what we have. I mean, everything's so confusing. None of these accounts are right, and we have a big fat mess. So, I mean, and that's just the reality of it. The balance as of January 1 was 5,631.93, and then we wrote a check for $5,000, which took it down to 631.93 in the hotel motel tax. So, we are just now building it up. So, that's, that's my problem. That's where, that's where my issue is lying with this, is just that we don't have a lot of money in that fund right now because we were, the previous council was misled by poor leadership, unfortunately, so.
But they say a lot of drivers believe that you said we don't have the money.
I didn't know that until I got this. I've been asking for this thing, so I didn't know that. And I didn't know until Friday that you guys wanted out of this particular fund, so.
We'll take it out anyway.
What fund did we pull the fireworks out of?
Public collections.
Okay.
When this resolution, when this resolution came to me, I asked the city clerk, if there was there, and she said it is. I had to take her to work. I'm fine with that. This, this hotel motel should be drawing, was it drawing 1,100 a month?
But hotel motel is technically when you're putting heads to beds, correct? Like, when you're bringing people into town. So, does this race bring people that actually get hotel rooms? Can you, like, is there proof that, like, you guys have brought hotel stays from this? Because that is the definition of hotel motel, huh?
We don't run the hotels.
Well, I know, but you could ask Dazan or something. You know, this has been more obvious, this is a seven day.
We asked that before, and the council hasn't necessarily accepted the legal order that they have us.
I mean, you could just get a letter from Dazan or something just stating that you guys put heads to beds. I mean, that's all I'm saying is, that's technically what the hotel motel tax is to be used for, is if you're bringing people into town that are staying in our hotels and bringing money back into our.
It's a tourism dollar. I think that it can be used, but, yeah.
Anyone else has any questions or any discussion points?
I would ask for your vote on this. I just gave you a vote that I disagreed with. I would ask you to vote for this.
Well, I don't feel comfortable voting for something when we don't have the funds to do it, and I don't know what our funds are. So, you taking the word of people that clearly are not 100% sure what's going on, I mean, that hasn't worked up to this point. So, I'm not going to go along with what you're saying. That's my opinion, so you can do whatever you want. But I'm going to do what I want to do, and I don't need you to tell me what to do.
Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yeah, but I'm going to say this. You guys need to start looking at other places other than the city of Farmer City for a minute.
Testory?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Present.
Poppy?
No.
Moves us to section four, other items, the city manager's report. Sue.
Don't really have anything yet today. Just first day, getting acclimated. I had a good staff meeting this morning and introduced myself, let them know that we're going to have a weekly department head meeting, and we'll be spending a lot of time getting acclimated, but getting up to speed on the budget and moving ahead.
Does anyone have any questions to Sue or enter manager's report?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, but if I could take a few minutes of your time and talk about something that I handed out.
Yes, sir.
If you're willing to have me do that.
First off, are there any questions to the city manager and her report? Non-agenda items and other business? Joe, yes, sir.
Thanks. I handed out a section of the statute that dealing with vacancies with the mayor's resignation. And I want to spend just a few minutes and sort of walk through this. I think this might be helpful. But I've given you the raw data here, the raw statute. I'm going to first ask you to turn to page five. They're not numbered, I apologize, but it is the fifth page. And actually, I have a couple of extra copies here. I don't have too many, but I'd be happy to share those with anybody in the audience that wants one. I'm not trying to hide anything, but that's the only extra ones I have.
Do I have one more?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you. Just a, just a couple of points, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions here. So with the, with the mayor's resignation effective at the end of this meeting, as he indicated, there will be a vacancy. Now, that, we've talked about this, and that position will be filled by election, not in 2018, but in 2019. In the interim, though, it's this council's responsibility to appoint an interim or acting city mayor. And bottom of page five kind of lays that out there. And the first thing is selected among, from among the city council members. If, for whatever reason, the city council members either don't want it or can't reach a majority, the necessary votes to get somebody, the statute then calls for, okay, you have the option of, of naming someone who is resident of the city, the Farmer City, and otherwise generally elected or generally qualified, having lived in the city for a year, eligible to vote, competent, et cetera, to be the mayor. So that's one point I want to bring out. Now, if, then I want to go to page four, the prior page. This gets a little bit complicated, but it's something you need to understand. If you choose from among one of you to be the acting mayor, then that person has a decision to make, among many other things, is, will I then resign my position as a council member or will to simply become, I'll call it, the mayor in its full capacity, and they're still the acting mayor until the next election? Or will I keep my alderman seat, my city council seat, and simply then also serve some functions as the mayor? That's significant because you can, if you do, if you do not resign, you cannot vote twice as alderman, council member, and as mayor. You can only vote once, and you're actually only voting as the alderman, technically. The other option is, if one of you is chosen to be the acting mayor, you can then resign your position as council member. That creates a true vacancy in the city council position, which then, you know, can and should be filled by this city council. So that's a technical nuance which you need to be aware of, that person will have to make that decision. The other points I want to make are really kind of in the last page. And I'll just kind of read these, although I, and I spent some time here this afternoon thinking about this and also talking with my partner about this, my law partner, Ken Beth, about this, about this process. Okay. I'll just read this here. It's fairly straightforward. Any council member can move, second, and or vote for him or herself as presiding officer or interim mayor or both, but you can't move and also second, okay? Three votes are required to elect a presiding officer or interim mayor. After the mayor has vacated or left the office at the end of this meeting, according to what the mayor has indicated, a presiding officer must be elected to run each meeting until an interim or acting mayor is elected with at least three, three council votes by the city council. Now, my fourth point, if the presiding officer is not elected to run a meeting, for example, the motion to appoint the person fails to get three yes votes, then there is no meeting, and the meeting is adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting or until three city council members call for a special meeting. So, I just want to make everybody aware of sort of the procedural process that you're under, which is a comment, you know, really dictated by state statute here of how this process works. I'm happy to entertain any questions now or privately if you may happen to have.
Are there any questions? Is there any other non-agenda items?
I have a few, thanks. It's been a while since we discussed this, but the water BM extract, did we get anywhere with that?
I didn't hear.
The water BM extract.
I have a change right here on that.
Okay.
So, Calvin and I will make some money.
I know. They're using approximately, they metered all the water that they use because they went and bought their own meters, and they're using about 450 gallons. So they're going to be way less than that.
There's a little bit of an issue.
It's a little bit of an issue because he's talked about bringing, having to switch to both. He can't do that because what you got there is cross-connect. You can't have a cross-connect. You can't have a chance that you're going to suck that, that prick water into, into our water system.
It's on its own system.
But he was talking about hooking them up together so you could switch.
I don't think they couldn't do that.
That's what, that's what Calvin told me, sure.
You could, you could put backflow out, huh?
That's right. I checked into that for him, too, to see how much.
But it has to be maintained once a year.
Sure. They'll be certified by the.
Right.
The other thing that I have is, we've got a lot of semi-traffic on John Street in front of school, and it's heavy, heavy equipment, 80,000 pound trucks. These guys are going to our facility where we work. They don't need to be going down John Street. And I know the bridge can handle it and all that, but there's, you got the pool there, and you got the schools there, and these guys travel it from 6:00 AM until 3:00 PM. It's way too much traffic. I'd like to see. way too much traffic. I'd like to see a sign on there saying that a semi's allowed, other than the ones that are going to school and make deliveries.
Do you encourage it with them to try to go around the corner and bring that way?
We do, but they don't always follow it. They're not going specifically to our facility. They're going to our sister company next door. You know, and they're not always the same drivers.
Sure.
But it's, I mean, it is, it's a lot of heavy equipment. It's going to tear the street, especially with it getting hot.
No, I was just thinking, John looks terrible right in front of that school, right at that stop sign, with a cross emergency.
It's just going to get worse running that thing. But more than anything, I'm worried about the kids. You know, get shoot out between cars, same thing at the pool, and semis don't stand a chance on stopping.
No public comments right now, sir.
GPS.
No public comments right now, sir. Thank you.
And then the last one I have is the recycling. Did we ever get anywhere with that?
Yes. She, I'm going to see if Sue will help me with our P's today. We're going to do the bidding process, because Area is like so far behind. They're going to town to town, that he won't be able to be here until like August 21st or something like that. So I've got it scheduled for him to come and talk. But I was going to see if I could sit down with her and try to do the bidding process, because I've got examples of bids that he gave me. So we really don't necessarily need to wait for Area. We can just go ahead and...
I'm just following up on some stuff. It just seemed like it just, all of it just got stagnant. So, if we bring it back to the top, we kind of remember what's going on.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I just heard one thing. Let me quick, I found it. I just am wondering about the house on Water Street that we sold to Gary Boiles. It was sold on June 20th, 2016 for $2,500. And at that meeting, Gary was here, and he, it was said at that time, Larry sat there and said, Gary's buying this because he's going to make it better. He's going to make it, you know, a danger. And it's July 10th, 2017, and the windows are still wide open in this house. It's, the roof is caved in, and I mean, I've been by it like four times this weekend. It's awful. And if I lived in that house next to it, I mean, I would be upset. Because I mean, it is just wide open, animal, I mean, just whatever. Anything can go in and out of there. And then, you know, I'm just questioning, because the house on Olive Street that we sold the same exact day to Brian McQuade, it has new windows in it. It looks way better. It's a major improvement. Yeah, he's actually doing things. Like, literally nothing has happened to this house on Water Street. Like, he's clearly using the garage and, you know, using whatever didn't burn down. But the part that's burnt down has not been fixed. One side has plywood on it, but the other side's wide open, and it looks terrible. And I thought, you know, I think there should be some sort of like statute, or I don't know how we can handle that, but if we sell a property to somebody and they're saying that they're going to fix it, if we're a year, you know, a year and a month later and nothing's been done, I mean, I feel like we've got to step up as far as like ordinance issues, that we can't allow that to happen. Because that was the whole point of selling it to them and taking a loss. I mean, we took a loss of $1,674 on that, that specific house. And I know it was, it was a major court battle with the owner, and it was just, it was a mess. So, I'm just questioning why it still is looking that way, when it's been this long. And nothing's been done to really hold him accountable, I guess. I mean, that's, I don't know for sure, but it seems that way.
Do we have any kind of timeframe over this stuff?
What's the exact address?
The exact address is 702 West Water. 702. West Water.
Any other non-agenda items, other business? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Sue moved.
Second.
Call it.
Poppy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Ted Story?
Yes.
Jenkins?